Okay, so can we get started then? Okay, it's six thirty-one. I'd like to start the meeting, call it to order, verify compliance of open meeting law notification, adopt the agenda. Can I hopefully stand for a pledge of the flag?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic where we stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Love the commitment Nancy.
Yeah, sorry.
You're good. Kathy did not receive any comments from the public, so we don't have any tonight. Move on to three discussion and future action items. A is a ten-year capital improvement plan with Mike and Todd.
Yeah, so put quite a bit of detail in the proposal. I know, we know this was a long time coming with our ten-year capital improvement plan. The last, the finance committee heard that we had a pretty large list of potential. And we also had a dollar amount at that time. What we were looking forward to at the finance facilities was how to go ahead and grade these pieces. So took the old twenty sixteen plan, the spring of twenty sixteen, used those same guiding principles. And as you see in the board packet, we simply used some rubric, added some rubric value to the guiding principles to start to grade out where these projects would fall over the course of ten years. Just so the finance committee can be, if you were at that meeting, you know where we left off. And so that's been created, all the projects that have been scored. And so essentially what you see is a list of the projects that come from resources. Really, it's our own internal list, DG Schmidt working with us, as well as the pretty extensive facility plan that was put together by Gray before we went to referendum, Gray advertised before we went to referendum. And so using those three pieces, Todd and DG Schmidt really put on the bulk of the work, can't give enough. I mean, this is really Todd putting a lot of this time together to really get this looking good, looking right. And so where we, what we've done on the top, as you can see on the pretty big Excel sheet, the big list, is pretty much put out a funding goal each and every year. Obviously then putting some projects of how they fall. We really focused on the high school roofing. You saw the rationale, we'll focus on this roofing that is, you know, from the nineteen sixties. And then as room becomes available, we'll start knocking out the thing at the top of the matrix. Or as things fail, they will clearly rise to the top, as we're seeing kind of with the middle school roofing proposal that we're bringing forward tonight. So what you eventually get on the very right is everything that would be left. The numbers each year have a five percent escalator, so inflation in this is five percent. So by the end of this thing, you would get somewhere around five percent increase in prices over the course of ten years. But what that eventually does at least is put out there really, you know, what would be left. Obviously, as new things pop up, they can be added to the list. The idea is to bring these things to the board every February. And we can peruse the list and see where we are and put some measurements and metrics to it over time. And that's where we are.
Okay, Todd, is there anything you want to add before we go around?
No, I'm ready.
Okay.
Start with Quinn.
So we have, like, the, um, the second and third one aren't in the budget until twenty eighteen, or twenty twenty-eight, twenty, twenty, twenty twenty-eight dash twenty-nine, right?
Yeah, yeah.
But, but they are rated, they got a score of eleven.
Yeah. So, yeah, I can explain that, Quinn. So anything that I couldn't find a nice spot for, like a nice budgetary spot, I moved it all the way to the right. So that it is transparent, that it's on there, that it has a high score. And if additional dollars come in, we can of course upgrade and should upgrade our DDC controls, though our roofing is on the verge. And so while the roofing scores might not be as high as the DDC, we have to stay on top of our roofing. The DDC would bring tremendous value. It's on there. If we would somehow get a surplus, we can move that thing over to the left and start knocking out those high numbers. Does that make sense how we kind of, how I kind of laid that out?
So really, yeah, so really, um, while it is rates high, it's not, um, needed to be done ASAP.
Though, though systems are currently working, Quinn, specifically the DDC controls. In a, in a few years, they'll be unsupported because they're at their lifespan and the programs aren't supported anymore by train. So that's why they're rated so high.
I can't hear Todd.
Yeah.
Cause you're not.
Yeah, Todd, you might have to come up here for this part of it, cause that mic only picks up for the videotape now. It doesn't amplify, so. He's moving.
Thank you.
You bet.
So like I was saying, the, the DDC controls are, are outdated, but they're still functioning.
Okay.
In a few years, they won't be supported by train anymore, which is why they score so high. Plus, there's a lot of energy efficiency that comes with digital controls in the building. Obviously, it's what controls our heating and cooling systems in the buildings. So there's, there's a good energy savings value there with those, which is why it scores so high.
Okay, thank you. That's all for me.
All right, Stephen?
Really, no questions, thanks.
Thank you. Kevin?
No questions.
Great. John?
Yes, I temporarily lost internet connectivity. Mike, you may have explained how you ended up with a, with a score total there. And if you did, I missed it. Can you explain the score total?
Yeah, and all the, all the yearly, all the rubrics, it's, it's typically scoring on that rubric, on the guiding principles.
Well, I see highs are three, mediums two, et cetera, but I see nothing down the left-hand side. Is this supposed to be a multiplication factor on the left to the right, or what?
Yeah, the only thing that has a multiplication factor to it is safety. That's the only thing we applied a double multiplier to, and only if it was high.
So some, so something can end up with a twelve, for example, if it scores high in four of those categories? Or, or high in two and medium in, in, um, see high in two and medium in three?
Yes.
Okay, so that's how it's done, all right.
Yeah.
Um, so I would kind of wonder, the, I mean, this, this is similar to the RAC code you and I talked about, risk assessment, um, matrix, except that when we would do that stuff, the scores would end up directing, the urgency with which we did something. And here, like Quinn, in, to the nature of Quinn's question, it, it indicates to me that a high score doesn't necessarily mean urgency in repair, but then that's kind of, uh, kind of metered by money available. So I guess for me, I, I don't really get a clear sense from this, uh, uh, matrix, this capital improvement plan table that you have here, as to how, as to what really is important, indicated when you compare it to what it always are. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Uh, so I can see a lot of work went into this, I appreciate that for everybody. I, I wonder if somehow we can come up with a, with a table that's going to indicate that we, this money, here's how we're going to spend it, kind of thing. Or we need to make, we need to create the, um, the balance in this account for this expenditure, because it's got a high score or something like that. So I just think the high scores ought to be balanced with how, how, uh, I mean, the high scores should be related in a sense to, or the, or when we expect to get the money or, or how urgent we are to try to get the money or, you know, kind of file away the money for it, save the money for it, I think should be proportional to its score.
Okay.
Give me an idea anyway of, of what your priorities are.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Nancy?
Uh, my question was the same as Quinn, and so that's already answered. But I also agree with John. I mean, I, I guess I just expected we would have this, um, this list and we would go down the list from top to bottom based on the score, but that's not what's happening. So I think it is difficult to see what's really important and what, what's not as important. The way that it's laid out currently.
Okay.
And to, yeah, sorry, Jonathan, to address both John and Nancy, um, the thing that we could put in there that, that may allow this to align better than is, is like some sort of the risk of waiting factor. You know, roofing being from nineteen sixty-seven, we're seeing a lot of those areas start to fail. And we do a lot of different patchwork and repairs on over time. The longer you wait, the bigger risk areas to, um, you know, insulation fail and causing those numbers to be much larger. Uh, and so we could put some sort of factor in there to better align it. I, I hope you can see a balance from, you know, matrix scores that are nine and up versus below nine. There, there's clearly a balance there that you're seeing of what we're going to do. It was simply a matter of trying to tackle this roofing within a realistic budget and really, you know, try, trying to create that balance from top matrix scores to bottom matrix scores. But I, I understand we can take a look at whether there's a different factor that may play in, or we do simply put off roofing, but, um, yeah.
So, I'm sorry.
Well, hold on, John, I'd like to give everyone a chance and then we can come back if you have follow-up questions, okay?
That's what I just said, thanks.
Okay. Uh, Nancy, are, nothing else, right?
No, that was it.
Okay, Karen?
I don't have any questions on this time.
Okay. We'll go back around. Quinn, any follow-up? Stephen, any follow-up?
Nope.
Kevin, any follow-up?
John?
No.
Yes, one thing that, uh, that may help, and it's just a thought, is, um, if the stuff on the, if the, if that left-hand column is, is ordered most important, least important, then maybe you would have a, a building envelope above energy or something like that. And if you assign those a six, five, four, three, two, one kind of a thing, you could do a point multiplier between the left-hand, uh, column value and the top row, uh, entry value. And just throwing it out there, but it might make things a little bit more clear, at least for somebody like me. Uh, and it could also then alleviate the explanations to folks like me. Uh, and it would be very clear that this envelope is more important than the controls because, because the controls may make us more efficient, won't necessarily pay for themselves, but the envelope is going to cost us a lot of money if the roof leaks. So it just, for example, something like that. So that's just a thought.
Okay.
Just to help clear things up for me.
Thanks, John. Nancy, any follow-up?
No.
Karen, any follow-up?
No.
Okay. Thank you, Mike and Todd. So we'll move on to B, middle school roof project with Mike and Todd again.
Todd, well, you took the lead on that.
So, uh, at the middle school, we have, um, a roof section. Almost fifty percent of the building actually is one roof section across the street. Uh, that section was installed in nineteen ninety-three. Um, it is a rubber roof, a ballasted rubber roof. The problem with that section of roof is that, uh, it wasn't installed quite properly, allowing enough expansion and contraction in the rubber itself. Uh, since it was installed, the rubber has begun to shrink. So it's actually contracted so much it is actually putting pressure on the outside walls, uh, to the point where we've had it tear in some places, uh, in the section. The fix here is to replace the, uh, remove the ballast, replace the rubber itself, and reuse the existing insulation that is already up to code that's underneath this ballasted section of roof. Uh, the new rubber will have the proper amount for expansion and some additional expansion joints built into that section of roof.
Mike, anything?
Yeah, currently budgeted, uh, for next year under current law and current variables. It is budgeted for inside of our operational budget for next year and really part of our three hundred thousand that we're setting aside for, for capital improvement projects, um, just like this. So it is currently budgeted.
Okay. Quinn?
No.
Stephen?
Nope.
Kevin?
Nothing here.
John?
Nothing.
Okay. Nancy?
No questions, thank you.
Karen?
No questions.
Okay. All right, thank you, Todd and Mike.
That's Todd.
On to.
Kids did it?
He shaved it.
Nice!
What?
No.
You're joining the club?
Oh, you don't have your video on?
Video on.
Get out of here, get out of here.
Seriously.
Okay. On to four action items. Just like last week, we're going to do a roll call vote for each of these, just to make sure we don't miss anything and there isn't a lag in someone saying yea or nay. Um, so first up is A, Niola semi-annual policy update. Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any questions or discussion? We'll go around Quinn.
No.
Stephen?
No questions.
Kevin?
None.
John?
No questions.
Nancy?
No questions.
Karen?
No questions.
Okay, then roll call vote. Jonathan, yea. Quinn?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
John?
No.
Nancy?
None.
Karen?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes. On to B, boys hockey co-op twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, and twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. Take a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay.
Yeah, so I, I think Dave did a nice job in writing it up, but we, um, as far as athletic co-ops, it's been since I think two thousand twelve, since we've been, been in a boys' hockey co-op, we haven't had interest. And we have seven, uh, athletes now who are interested in participating next year. Um, and so there is no cost to the district, because all of the costs are paid for by the athletes with equipment and all of those types of things. And so hockey is one of those, uh, that it takes a lot of teams, especially in this part of the state. Maybe you get up into northern Wisconsin, they can do that, but, so, uh, Whittanoe has been part of a boys', actually, I take that back. It's a co-ed hockey, so for Title IX purposes, it doesn't, um, misbalance the female male sports. So it actually is a co-ed hockey, so I misspoke, I apologize. So, um, I think everything was in there, there's not an additional cost in there. Um, I think Dave did a good job of putting it in there, so.
Okay, go on, Quinn.
So the district doesn't chip in for ice time or for just a jersey?
Yeah, so the way that the hockey is, it's sort of like with our, like the gymnastics one, which we're part of with multiple ones, there, you know, they have very few uniform, like, they have a leotard. Like, I mean, when you talk about that, so some of those costs are really minimal. That's all paid for with, uh, part of the cost that the, the athletes do.
So ice time?
That I can't tell you specifically, the ice time exactly, or if that's part of it. Cause normally when students play, um, like, club hockey, that's part of the whole fee that, that goes into all of that. And that's my understanding, talking to Dave, but I can follow up for sure, for sure on that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Excuse me.
Stephen?
No questions.
Kevin?
Quinn asked mine.
John?
No questions.
Nancy?
No questions.
Karen?
No questions.
Okay. Then I'm a yes. Quinn?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Okay. Motion's approved. On to C, student Chromebook purchase twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay. Lisa, is there anything you want to share?
No, I think, um, there was one. Mike, are you still on?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, if, if there are questions here, I just want to reiterate kind of the urgency we're looking at, at least getting some Chromebooks on site where our reserve are, are running pretty low. I got another, um, email from Todd Stacey today. We're down to about twenty to twenty-five versus the forty. Um, and so any sort of purchase that we can put in as soon as possible gives us the chance to kind of get devices on site, hopefully by the latest mid-May, uh, to be able to handle, you know, this greater virtual learning capacity that we have in place. We were ready to go with a full six hundred. Uh, we put it now in place, just a phased plan. What I'm asking for the board is to say yes to the entire plan and then as or if variables as far as funding change, we can respond and make different, uh, purchasing decisions based on, on that funding that, that the state is looking at right now. So, um, yeah, if there's any specific plans about, about what we're looking at, please feel free to ask.
Okay, we'll go around Quinn.
No. Excuse me.
You have any questions? No. Kevin?
No questions.
John?
Um, is this one sixty-five, uh, is that for six hundred or is that for two hundred phase one?
No, that's for all six hundred. And, and the insurance that goes with it.
That's all, that's the only question I had.
Okay.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay. On to Nancy?
No questions.
Okay. Karen?
No questions, thank you.
Okay. Then I'm a yes. Quinn?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Excuse me again.
Kevin?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. On to five, reports, superintendent report.
Uh, can everybody on the, who's virtually, uh, calling in, can you hear me fine?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to, okay, I just want to make sure before I got started, thank you. Um, so I thought it was probably appropriate, based with everything going on, to sort of do a report on multiple items, um, both to the board and to the community tonight. So I have some items that I just wanted to report on, um, where we are with some things. So the first thing, um, is our virtual learning progress. And so I just wanted to recap where we are and what that looks like. Um, so as you know, we took, uh, what we referred to as an extended spring break, which a lot of universities did, other school districts did that, to allow us to plan for some structures, some system-wide structures to begin our learning. Um, and while our students in grade six through twelve had a Chromebook, that doesn't automatically translate to them doing virtual learning in school, because obviously they were here physically in school for a different reason and use the Chromebook very differently than if you were taking online classes. And so our teachers, while they had some things in a Google Classroom, which is really a glorified Google Drive for the students to turn in their assignments, the instruction really wasn't happening online. And so that's a huge undertaking for a system. Um, had we been only looking at secondary, could have been a little bit faster, but we really felt it was important to look at the entire system. And so, um, the first week that we came back after our official spring break, um, we worked a lot on the technology piece to make sure all of our students K-four, uh, through grade twelve had a device and worked with the tech team to make sure that they had connectivity and a device. A lot of parents, over the course of time, realized that maybe now they were working at home, and so the device they had thought their child was going to use, now they needed a device from the school, or multiple people in their family were sharing the same device. So that first week was making sure that students could get on, connect, they could get their logins, they could get into Google Classroom, they could see videos, all of this stuff with, goes with that and related to technology. Um, and then last week was our first full week in academic learning, posting assignments, um, those types of things. And this week, we're fully in the, the, that, uh, our, our mode of what is a schedule or a weekly schedule. You know, I know initially there was a little bit of pushback, we may have heard from the community about the timing and why didn't we get started, and I will still stand by that decision. Um, in fact, um, we hear that a lot of districts who sort of started, and I say that in air quotes, for those of you can't see me, are really, have had to reset where they came out with. They either had too much work for students to do, or technology wasn't working, or there are still some districts right in our, our area that their elementary students are still not online. They are still using worksheets and packets. So I wanted to just be clear that it's easy to say, compare, or if you hear somebody say, well, another district or other districts went online faster than we did, there's some questions you're going to have to ask. Did they really go online K-four through grade twelve? Did they really make sure that every student was able to connect and had a device? Those are some really critical questions to ask. And because we took our time upfront to do that, I think our transition into, moving into that has been a little bit easier now and is smoother. Um, I know, talking to some area districts that had some professional development even today, they've had to sort of reset and re-norm some of the things that they came out right away with a couple weeks ago. So this isn't to compare, but sometimes people do that. We're each on our own journey, but feel very strongly on to make sure that all our teachers felt good about the work they were going to do. Um, just as our students were at different levels with technology, so were our teachers. And we needed to make sure that they all felt very confident in order, in doing the job that they did, because none of us anticipated this. It would have been different had we said, hey, next year we're all going online and would have had time to plan and done things differently. None of us planned for that. So for that means I have to give kudos to our IT staff, um, who are able to quickly turn around, um, to get things in a, in a platform and consistently, to our administration to set up a lot of the structures to make sure that we had consistent lesson plans. We are hearing from parents now that they're very grateful that students K-twelve are using the same platform. Everything is in Google Cla- Classroom. Other districts are using something different for the elementary, something different for maybe secondary. And then parents who are managing that learning have multiple systems. So it was very intentional to try to manage the systems that were consistent across our district. Um, and the asynchronous versus synchronous learning, um, that goes on to make sure that all students have the ability to get that content at any time and don't have to be online in case there's a glitch with technology. So there was a lot of planning that went on there. Our teachers are doing an amazing job right now, um, as far as getting the content there and learning themselves, because a lot of them are in learning mode in addition to teaching mode. And so that, that's going on for all of them. And so it's getting smoother, um, holding, uh, grade-level department meetings and feel very good about what they're doing. And so using that and reminding them that it's okay, like, they, they're feeling very vulnerable right now, but that we're not there to, you know, we're there to support them and, and that things might not go right, probably won't go right the first time. And so, um, not sure if at the end of this week, or at the beginning of next week, we will do a survey system-wide. You want to be careful about asking people's opinions, no matter if it's students, parents, or teachers, too early, because the first implementation of it right off the get-go until things are in a rhythm are really hard. And so teachers were doing some check-ins to make sure that every student was getting connected and all of that. But like, how, how, how much is the work? Is it too little? Is it not too little? Are teachers responding quick enough? Asking teachers the same questions about, are they getting all students to turn in assignments? So you need to let that go a little bit. We've learned, um, and have some draft surveys that we're going to be sending out to all of our stakeholders to get some system-wide feedback. You know, too much, not enough work at the elementary, middle school, high school level, all of those types of things that we're looking at. So that survey will come out. Um, we're, we're talking about that one that will be, and, and so we'll use those results. And if we need to modify or adjust, we will do that. So that's, um, that's as far as our virtual learning, where we are. So we are moving our technology curbside pickup, drop-off, pick-up, aloner type of thing seems to be working very smooth. We have that timed with our meal, um, pickup service, so people don't have to necessarily go out twice and are using our help desk, and so have a really good system set up for that. Uh, next thing I wanted to talk to you about is our class of twenty twenty. I think all of us are feeling very sad. We all, you know, regardless if you had a good or average or great, um, high school experience, your senior year, it's the last time you're with students that you've been with for a, a lot of years. And your spring especially is the time that you look forward to, there's a lot of memories made there. So we all are hurting for our seniors right now. So we are making sure that all of the seniors, regardless of how they left, some of them. So we are making sure that all of the seniors, regardless of how they left, some of them, um, you know, may have not had some incomplete assignments, not sure where they were, their grade may have not been where they wanted it to be, very worried about, will I get my diploma, what things are being done? So we're spending a lot of time connecting our counselors, um, high school administration and making sure that we're we're, um, connecting with all the kids who need to, uh, assignments that were out and that every student is being engaged in the work, um, that they need to be right now. Um, we have not yet made any decisions about our graduation ceremony, um, because I think that's a little premature. Obviously, I will tell you that my goal is to have a face-to-face ceremony at whatever that 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 is a that is a high priority. Again, that decision may be not mine to make, but we're holding off on that right now. And so we don't want to keep putting out there, well, we're going to move it back one week or two week until something larger than us comes and says, this is what the conditions are. You should plan to or not plan to do. We've looked at a lot of different options, if it means not holding it in the gym, holding it outside so it's safer. But again, a lot of those restrictions are probably outside things that we can entirely control right now. But I just wanted to let you know where we're standing right now and where I think that that is a really big deal to have a physical ceremony somehow to to, um, you know, wrap up your your whole high school career. I think even probably more than a college graduation, there's just something about high school graduation and being there. For some students, this might be the last graduation that they have, at least, and and what that looks like. Um, right now, we are working on a special project, uh, with our Whitnall Falcon Booster Club and hope to be able to announce that in the next day or two to sort of, uh, work, uh, to commemorate our seniors and recognize them and sort of show them the support in the community. And so we'll get that. I don't want to say too much about that, but we're really trying to make sure that they feel that the community is behind them and recognizes that, um, what they're going through is not easy for for anybody. So. Uh, DPI waivers. Uh, so there are some waivers that, um, DPI has made available and it is a lot easier process than it normally is. Um, the first one that we'll talk about is instructional minutes. So as you know, by law, there are so many instructional minutes that need to be put in and it's hours, it it converts to minutes. Usually that comes into play when we have a lot of snow days, like last year was one of those times. And so there's a lot of things that you can do to make up those days. Sometimes it's add five minutes to class and all of that. This obviously is extraordinary, uh, circumstances that we are all living in. And so, um, DPI has made the process for asking for an a waiver for instructional minutes for this year very easy. It's basically an automated process that you can, they've not rejected anybody. However, by state statute, to ask for a waiver for some of the state statutes, you have to hold a public hearing, which is different than just putting it on the agenda at a board meeting. And so you can have the public hearing within a board meeting, but it basically just says that the public needs to be aware that you are asking for, um, a waiver from the state statute for that year. And so they have additional input potentially because it's a higher stakes situation. I don't know of any district in the state, unless they are a virtual online school, who would not be asking for a waiver for instructional minutes. And so this is going to be done in, I would say, virtually, virtually, um, every school district in the state. Uh, about fifty-some have already gone through the process and held the public hearing, um, to waive their instructional minutes and then put in the waiver. So I would anticipate, there's no rush on it, but I would anticipate doing that probably sometime in May. You don't have to say how many minutes you're going to have. It's just that you want to be waived from it. So that was new for a lot of people because a lot of people have not asked for that waiver. Um, the second waiver that most districts are going to ask for relates to the educator effectiveness, which is teacher evaluation. And so because of the time of the year that we paused school and we really can't be doing teacher observations virtually now, um, you have a few options on what you would want to do because it is state statute to do, uh, teacher evaluations at least every three years. A teacher has to receive a formal summative evaluation every three years. So if principals had not gotten in to do a full classroom, class period evaluation up until this point, that may be a problem. And so there's a couple of options that we have as a district. You can either say that you're going to repeat the third year of their evaluation cycle next year. Or you could entirely waive the process, which means that that person, this was their year three, but nothing happens, and then they start again on year one. So there's a couple of different things. If you move everybody forward in year three to year three next year, the year twos also move forward on year three. Now you have this huge bottleneck of all of your staff on a cycle being in year three. And so from a principal's workload, that becomes really hard to manage. So we're working on what we think is best for our district, um, as we look with other districts. And so that also needs a public hearing because it is asking to waive a state statute. So, and I believe that each of those has to have their own separate public hearing, although they could be within the same school board meeting, not to complicate things. The other waiver we might have to take is the one about the civics exam. So right now it's a graduation requirement for, um, students to have passed the civics exam. Students who've been at Whitnall, um, by the time they're seniors, um, most of them have, but sometimes we get students who transfer in their senior year. Or, um, we had one student who just, uh, came back last week while we're in virtual learning. And so we have to check to make sure that any student, any of our seniors have met the requirement of a civics exam, who may have just transferred here even in the last few weeks. If any of them may have not passed the civics exam, either in a previous school or whatever the case might be, we would then ask for a waiver across the board to say that the civics exam would not be a graduation requirement. So there are districts who are doing that, even if you have one student who didn't pass that exam and they may have not even been that our student for that long, you would need to ask for a waiver. I don't have an answer for that. I've asked Charlie to check with the high school counselors. Um, and again, we still could get students that transfer in our district between now and the end of the school year. So it might be in our best interest to just have that waiver, uh, in case we have any students. Um, again, it will be minimal, but even if you have one student, you would still need a waiver in order for that student to get a high school diploma if they've met every other requirement, uh, that our local board policy has. So that's it related to the DPI waivers. Summer school twenty twenty, um, obviously is sort of up in the air. We were supposed to open our online registration on April first. We paused that because we're not quite sure if we're if we're even coming back to school, let alone having summer school. One of the tricky parts that, um, school districts are noticing is that right now the law does not allow students in kindergarten through sixth grade to do virtual summer school. You can't count that. You can only count virtual summer school for students in grades seven through twelve. So that that might be a problem. The majority of school districts, bulk of summer school is in elementary school. And honestly, we get FTE count through summer school. It'll be a year lagging that if we didn't run our elementary summer school. Mike, are you still on?
I did not leave.
Okay, thank you. Um, do you know on average how many FTE students we get per summer school?
Yeah, we we got a fairly big increase this past year because we use, uh, the the back-to-school.
Correct.
I'm forming it up right now.
Okay.
I want to be accurate in what I'm saying. Uh, so we are now at, um, yeah, we get, we get an FTE of eight, which might not sound like a lot, but you're talking at eleven thousand, uh, per pupil. So eighty-eight thousand dollars of summer school count. So every one down, uh, would be a loss of eleven thousand dollars.
So, but that is a year delayed, right?
It's averaged over three years.
Okay, okay.
So if you have a big number down, it would just bring the average down and hopefully if you come back up the year after, it's a very small bit of what we're talking about.
Okay. So I just wanted everybody to be aware. We were notified late last week as superintendents that DPI is looking at allowing K through six virtual summer school. We all sort of joked by saying, I think parents are pretty tired of virtual summer school. They really are hoping that there's some face-to-face. But, um, we'll keep you posted on that. Um, but it is an impact for a lot of schools, um, as far as FTE or what you may or may not be able to offer. So depending upon if we return this year, what summer school looks like, what we may have to offer, um, as it relates to some opportunities for students we weren't planning on. If there are students who feel behind academically rather than the enrichment pieces that we typically offer, we might have to augment our offerings. And so we're just sort of pausing on that until we get a little bit more guidance from, uh, DPI on that. Um, we did send, I did send something out late last week about when the legislative is, as it relates to school funding for twenty twenty-one. I can't do the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. That's just a lot of, I think, until we all can get that mastered. Um, they do go into session tomorrow, um, to take up some legislature related to the pandemic. I think that there's, you know, a lot of speculation. It makes it very challenging when typically in the second year of a biennium, that is pretty like you're set. Again, we know we're under extraordinary circumstances, um, but that is one of the things that we, you know, there's a ying and a yang to this. If we're going to say, we'll do our part now, the assumption is, is that's because it's not going to hurt us in the end by doing our part next year that we're sort of counting on what that is. Because I think we try to be, you know, fiscally responsible here in doing what what, you know, we need to do. So I think that it it's interesting how that might project itself. And so a lot of the, um, pieces that, when Mike brought forward the Chromebooks proposal tonight, that was intentional to phase that. And so that might be how we approach some of the things, is that here's the absolute need to, here's what we were planning. But if we had to start really cutting back, like maybe we'll wait a little bit on some of those things. So the things that you're going to see us putting forward, if it relates to operational things, construction, have lead times that we have to make sure that we have. If there's some things at the end, we're going to start prioritizing those and hopefully get some guidance from the legislature soon enough. I understand collection of property taxes may not be under their control, but they're trying to also think about that and consider where a lot of those things are. So it's challenging for us, um, that we don't have that second year to count on right now. Um, we did get some guidance today. I think I have shared with you that the, um, CARES Act that originally came out asked school districts to do their part by, to the fullest extent possible, fulfill their obligations. There was a clause both to their school district employees as far as salaries, but there was also something related to contractors. And that also has been playing interesting, like what does that mean? Um, if you have contracted services, whether it's bus companies or food service or whatever, if they're not your employees, are you obligated to continue to when the services aren't being delivered? So we did get a little bit of, um, legal guidance on that today. Because I think as everybody is, the laws are being passed, but then there is this lag time in the interpretation of what that law actually means for us to implement it. Sometimes laws get passed. I know this is shocking. They don't really think through the implications or all of the details and we get them and like, well, guess what? I think we saw that with the elections piece of it where certain parts were passed and 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 took place, but all of a sudden nobody took part like at, as the school board canvassing part like, but nobody forgot to look at that law because that also had to be changed and it got just hanging out there. So sometimes people don't look at all the details and then we're sort of stuck in the middle. So, um, I'll I'll leave it with there because right now it'd be speculative, but I think we are trying to be very cautious on any spending moving forward that that might be, I don't think we ever do optional, but one of those things that could or should this be delayed? Or is there not a lead time in in having this happen? We're going to just sort of pause on some of those until we get a little bit more direction from the state. The last thing I wanted to update you on, um, is the high school construction updates. And so we made the decision last week that, um, regardless if we come back to school or not, we were going to move forward with the construction now. And so we are doing some demo that wasn't planned until June, um, now. So the kitchen itself is not being touched. So if we come back, we could still serve students in our in our gym as far as the cafeteria space because there's still a way for them to get out, um, and and be able to serve students in the cafeteria. And so that is our plan, should we return and need to serve meals. Right now, our food service staff is able to, um, still prepare meals for the meal pickup. That hasn't impact impacted their ability to it. There is still another asbestos removal project because I was going to wait until June, but now we can move that up. Um, I just checked with Todd and that'll start in two weeks. But they demoed, uh, the ceiling, uh, in the actual cafeteria today and good news, it looks very healthy up there compared to sometimes you take those ceiling tiles and there's some crazy stuff you don't know. So I was actually very impressed with how it looked today. So that's the good news. Um, one of the only thing that C G Schmidt has said in the process, we've started having having weekly construction meetings, is that they're hoping that their manufacturers are able to produce at the same schedule. Right now, there's only one from the HVAC system, one small part that they think might be a little bit off on the schedule, but not to the point that it wouldn't meet our deadlines or anything, but that's the other part. If you wait too long on some of that, it might be some of the parts that they need to do the construction that might get delayed. So they are able to move forward with that. We're continuing moving forward, which is good. So none of that gets delayed. Um, and they aren't, the work that they're doing is not in confined spaces where they have to limit the number of workers and some of that that has happened. So, um, those are my updates for now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Questions? So how are we with our juniors in ACT?
We haven't gotten the results yet. They typically.
Did they all take them?
Yeah, so, well, so, um, the original date at the end of February, we had our students take that. I have to check and honestly, um, I don't know. I'd have to check with Charlie. There's a makeup date then, which was March seventeenth, which is that, um.
Right when it was.
Right, it was that St. Patrick's Day, right after we, um, the new part of school. So we did get all of our students who were scheduled and the extended time students and all of that able to get in their exams. I can't tell you if anybody needed to take the makeup. It would be a small number of people if they did, um, but I can let you know on that.
No, I just.
Yep, so the bulk of our students did get in there because that was at the end of February, so.
I got a couple, actually. Sorry. So do we have anybody that didn't pass a civics exam at this point that you know of?
Not from our school district. Charlie needed to check. We've had a couple of transfer students in, and so we have to get that. That doesn't always come across on their transcripts.
Okay. And now that we've done all this work with the virtual learning, does that kind of bulletproof us for snow days and upcoming?
That is a great question, and I think the answer to that is probably yes. Um, yeah, I would think that it sets us up very well for being able to do that. So, yeah.
All right. And then one of the last questions, I was actually, you know, I'm glad we took the pause to try and do this as thoughtfully as we could. So I just wanted to make sure that the teachers that had to completely shift the way they're teaching, are they getting good, um, use out of like the coaches? Are they piling in and helping out with this so that they're feeling supported along this whole process?
Yeah, what I would say is that our principals are reporting the most collaboration among teacher groups now than ever before. And partly it's just that that virtual environment that you work in that sort of forces that. Sometimes it's almost too convenient when you have the physical space and now you're sort of relying on that. And our coaches, um, have those, so they are jumping in in their Google classrooms and helping them. And and I would say yes, the highest level of collaboration. And it's interesting, even though some some teachers were more probably technologically advanced, it sort of leveled the playing field. It was sort of like we all jumped into this at the same place and the same point. And so I think it sort of gave people a little bit more ease. So yes, I think that they are using that support. Um, we have several people who they're able to call, not just our IT, because they're they're busy with a lot of the hardware issues and and that. But our coaches are really stepping up and a couple, um, little mini groups to support, Google Classroom support groups, or even popping up people who feel more comfortable are supporting other teachers and that. So hearing from the principals and popping in on staff meetings, virtual staff meetings every once in a while, I would say across the board, teachers are feeling like they can, they know where they can go to get help.
Okay.
Yeah.
Kevin?
I don't think I have any questions. Just thank you for all the work you and the administration have done because it's, uh, it's clearly been a challenge for everybody else. So I can only imagine how much work you guys have been doing and how stressful it can be. So thank you.
You're welcome.
John?
Likewise, I appreciate the work. Thanks very much for hanging with it.
You're welcome. Thanks.
Nancy?
Uh, no, no comment, but, um, to reiterate, everybody else, thanks for all, everybody's hard work.
Karen?
Yes, thank you. These updates are very helpful. So thanks for sharing all the detail and I don't have any questions.
Okay, and yeah, I want to, uh, the food service staff, if you want to, I don't know if you want to speak a little bit, but I know at the beginning it it's been ramping up with the number of students that are coming in. And I know last week there was an Easter bunny and there was that going on, but, um, people like that, people like the tech support people and custodians, they do. they do all the behind-the-scenes stuff and it's not recognized as readily as seeing a teacher in a classroom or a coach or whatever it is. But without their work and the administration, all the hours and time they're putting in behind the scenes, none of this would be possible. So thank you to the food service staff, to Todd, Chris, the rest of the tech staff and to Todd and the rest of the custodians who are doing a tremendous job. But if you want to say a little bit about the food service, food pickup?
Yeah, I didn't put that on the separate thing, but our food service numbers have been going up. They've been gradually going up. We are highest prior to last Thursday was two hundred and sixty meals that we serve. We serve both, it's a breakfast and lunch pickup. Last Thursday, we picked up three hundred and, or we had three hundred and twenty meals that were served. And it's a combination of things, I think, you know, the word is getting out, but I also do think, because our, our food service workers are hearing firsthand the number of families that are now maybe not having full employment in their house. And so that situation is hitting differently and so they're taking advantage of it. And I would have to tell you that, you know, having been down there, I pop in whenever I can, that they are, they really are making connections with our families and are getting to know them. And I think that you can just see the, the, the stress that a lot of our parents are under, whether it's because they, you know, kids are at home, the employment situation, having to deal with a lot of things that, that aren't, you know, in the ordinary here. But yeah, they're doing a phenomenal job. It was, I helped last Thursday and there was this little five-year-old boy who came in, who was, did not come in. He was in the back and they rolled down their windows and they're sort of a process. But he had brought tulips for each of the food service workers last Thursday and gave it to each of them. And so just watching that and, you know, there was some pretty emotional parents too. I think you see that, you know, just what a relief that is for them to be able to come and pick that up and have one less thing to be able to do and know that their kids are getting a balanced nutritional meal and, you know, something that they look forward to doing each day. And just seeing familiar faces and being able to come back on school grounds because that uncertainty of like, is my school still there? You know, what is happening? So it's, it's a lot of great stuff that, and I would concur that our folks are doing some wonderful stuff behind the scenes. So.
All right. Thank you. So we'll move on to six items for future consideration. Anybody on the phone? Okay. Seven announcements.
No one's mad.
Quinn, Lisa, why don't you share about the Easter excursion last Friday?
Well, I don't know why you're asking Lisa.
Well, she helped plan it, right?
Oh, okay.
She coordinated with you to make sure your motorcycle was working.
Yes. It was, it was wonderful. I was grateful to be asked. You know, we probably, there was, you know, we planned out this route and it was goofy and there were streets and, and to, first of all, to the people that live east of Highway one hundred, I'm sorry, I planned out the route. I'm sorry, we just, we couldn't get over there. And if it's done again, we will make sure we get to east side of Highway one hundred, okay? But there was, it was, it was some, the people were so appreciative, the kids were crazy, they loved it. You know, we turned a street and there wouldn't be anybody. We turned another street and there'd be five families there. And, yeah, it was just a wonderful, it was freezing out, but it, you know, we were on the bike for like two and a half hours and didn't notice at all until I, until I was driving home and going a little faster, then I noticed it was cold. But it was, I was just grateful to do it. It was a lot of fun. And the people loved it.
Great. Thank you. Okay, any other announcements?
Gave away her anonymity.
I didn't. She helped coordinate what we're talking about.
Yep. It was good.
Anybody else? Okay. Eight, meeting debrief.
It's not ten o'clock.
Yes. I know. It's not even seven thirty.
Fifty-five minutes.
And, and all the technology work. So that's great.
I know.
Okay. Take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Wait, did Nancy say?
None. Motion carries. Have a great evening, everybody.
All right. Have a good one.